I call this meeting of the common council to order. Roll call, please.
Byer.
Here.
Peachey.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Brandl.
Here.
Lars.
Here.
Tully.
Here.
Kraus.
Here.
Horn.
Here.
Thank you. This time we'll entertain public participation. Anyone wishing to address the council may do so. We ask that you please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please. Anyone?
Mine will be short and sweet. Tony Weidel, N 4940, County Road N. I'm here to say that I don't think we should abolish the municipal court. I feel like there's too many questions to be answered. For this to get all sprung on the council, I don't think you guys had an adequate time to be able to look at everything and see everything that we needed. The pros versus cons, nine versus five, are they weighted equally? Is one versus the other? I didn't think that was in there. I'm just here to say that, yeah, I think we should maybe table it and think about it some more. It's not just a quick, cut-and-dry answer, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jim?
I'm just checking the mic. That's my job. I'll speak up.
Hi, Steve Lewis.
Steve is the red button. I'm...
The green button.
It should be a green button.
I own the Jefferson area business center at 222 Wisconsin Drive. And I have one question, and that's why. Tom and Ogle last time put it eloquently. It's like a solution, you know? Looking for a problem. Our municipal court has been great for decades. No problem. So what is the why? I'm sure some of you will say, wow, we're going to save money. I mean, is that it all the time? Let's cut services and save money. Thirty thousand dollars. I think I saw somewhere you're raising your budget up to thirteen million? Over thirteen million? I think I read in the paper Fort's budget is Ryan here? I think it was in the paper at ten million or something. I think we could cut where a city of seventy-eight hundred people, Fort's fifteen thousand. So I question though, the why? Thirty thousand dollars on a thirteen million dollar budget? Fraction of a percent. And it's just not a reduction in a budget. It's just not taking a few dollars out of the chief's budget, or Cindy Keller's budget, or the maintenance guy's budget. You're talking about eradicating an entire department that's been part of the city for generations. My question is why? Is that the best the city could come up with for a solution? There's so many questions. I was here earlier, and I heard one of the council members say, I just learned about this in October. So I assume all of you just learned about this. And some of you are pretty sure it's a great idea. And you know what? It might be the greatest idea. But I sure don't know that yet. And it looks like a lot of people in our city, they don't know that yet. And you know, Dale, you would love everybody to understand your decision. I know you would. So we're in no hurry. I also heard we don't have a contract. The judge doesn't even know we're coming there to the new municipality. Let's all take a breath. Let's just table this. Let's get more input. This is huge for our city. It's ripping more fabric right out of it. I don't want to go outside of Jefferson. Please keep it in town.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Next.
Good evening. Andy Didion. I guess maybe reiterating a little bit what Steve said.
Your address, sir.
Pardon?
Your address, sir, please.
N 4232 State Road 89, Jefferson. As far as due diligence on the part of the board, about a week ago I had an opportunity, or I had a meeting up in Watertown, and an implement dealer up there, and I don't know how we got on the topic, but stated he saw in the paper that we were looking at this. And he says, well, have they, who have they talked to? Who have they looked, you know, what other communities have they checked out to see how it's working for them? He said, if you want to see how things are working, go up here in Dodge County and talk to Mayville, thirty-two miles from Beaver Dam, Horicon, about twenty-five miles from Beaver Dam. Both of them have, go to Beaver Dam to, for the services. He says, you want to see people that are not happy? Go talk to people from Mayville and Horicon. So question is, where has the due diligence been? And then one last thing, I served on the school board for a number of years, and we always talked about local control. So what are you giving up here? You're giving up local control, and you're going to ship it to someplace else. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Anne Atsett, W 9569 Skogen Road, Cambridge. Although I reside in the township of Oakland, I'm a property and business owner in the city of Jefferson, and felt compelled to speak up tonight as Jefferson is my hometown. I attended my first City of Jefferson Committee of the Whole and Council meeting on October 30th. After sitting through a presentation of why the city should do away with the municipal court, I couldn't help but wonder that the administrator or chief gave no reference or mention of working with the judge or court clerk on how to improve the court. Wouldn't the judge and court clerk be the people to ask about their department? I was shocked that both sides weren't given an equal opportunity to speak. I don't know how one could make an educated vote without hearing both parties unless the disbanding of the Jefferson Court was already a done deal. It is my understanding that the municipal court is a separate entity and is not run by the police chief. It appears to me that someone has a personal agenda to remove the municipal court and the people that run it. If it was professionally done, the judge and court clerk would have been consulted. On October 30th, Chief Pledgie gave a lengthy explanation of why we should join Lake Country Court system, name dropping the prior chief of police, Gary Bleecker's name, numerous times. I spoke with Gary Bleecker, and Bleecker told me the facts are, the village of Johnson's Creek has no municipal court, and has never had a municipal court. Upon learning about and joining Lake Country, it works for Johnson's Creek. They are a small village, as are all the participants of Lake Country, with the exception of City of Oconomak. The city of Jefferson, on the other hand, has a municipal court that has been working for the community for many years and knows our community as they are residents. For those of you that don't know me, I worked for the city of Jefferson for 26 years as a police dispatcher. My office was adjacent to the court clerks. This gave me an insight of the workings of the Jefferson Municipal Court. From what I could tell, the judge and a clerk did a fine job, and now with their updated computer system, it's making collections of fines much easier. Judge Miller and Clerk White are strong and firm with the public. Not an easy job when a lot of their customers, I saw, were upset and verbally abusive that they had to pay a fine. It should also be noted it was very confusing for many defendants, and on many occasions I would receive phone calls at the police department, or I would get walking customers wanting to pay a fine, often getting the municipal court and the Jefferson County courthouse mixed up. I can only imagine the chaos that will ensue when, if you choose to go with Lake Country and send defendants to another city in a different county. In Chief Pledgie's presentation to the Committee of the Whole, he made several references to the friendly and professional employees at Lake Country, leading me to believe he did not find working with the judge or the court clerk likable. I worked with them for many years and didn't have any problems with either women, but I didn't tell them how to run their department. From what I could tell while working for the police department, Chief Pledgie wanted to get rid of the municipal court from the get-go. And I have been retired from the police department for two years, and it was talked back then. By disbanding the municipal court, I feel this would be doing a great disservice to the Jefferson community, also an inconvenience to the officers and city attorney that would have to travel to and from Oconomak. Chief Pledgie stated at the meeting of the whole that the police department currently provides a police officer for court, pulling an officer off the road to sit in on court proceedings. I ask you, wouldn't it be better to have a court officer in town where they could be pulled out of court if needed? But if that officer is an Oconomak for court, they would be worthless to the Jefferson community. We are happy living in and around the Jefferson area, but are the people that are trying to run the city going to care about where the fines are paid in five years? Probably not, because if I was a betting person, the head of the police department and city administrator won't even be living in the city. It's all about numbers for them, but for me, it's about the people. The people of Jefferson, the people who reside here and are proud to call Jefferson their home. I want to thank Alderman Byer, Miller, Tully, and Peachey for taking time out of their lives to come to the informational meeting on November 13th hosted by Judge Miller. It shows that you are open to hearing not just one side of the story. This is your city. I ask that you take time to talk to the employees that are in the municipal court department and not just take the word of the police chief. Sounds like there's a hidden agenda here. There could be improved communication between city hall and the municipal court. Perhaps if they work together, they could keep the jobs in the city for local residents. Council members, I urge you to take a look at both sides so you can make an educated vote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
My name is Cindy Hummerich. I don't reside in the city of Jefferson, but I am the clerk-elect for the Circuit Court here in Jefferson County. I wanted to provide some information that has come up in the last couple of meetings without answers. The Circuit Court on an annual basis processes seven to 10,000 traffic and juvenile ordinance and adult ordinance violations. The impact of absorbing citations processing for the city of Jefferson would not overwhelm us. That would actually be less than what we ebb and flow on an annual basis. That would not be increase in staff. That would not be a problem for us to do. It is the least expensive option. My understanding is that Lake Country Municipal Court would take thirty-three dollars in court costs, five dollars for the state, and nineteen percent if it went to a collection agency. That brings a ninety-eight dollar citation down to about fifty dollars. That's a lot of difference. The differences between the courts are significant, and I think those differences play into why Johnson's Creek was not happy with being part of the Circuit Court. OWI citations, juvenile citations, they're not mandatory. You pay your citation. We default judgment. You don't have to come to court. There are no juvenile alternative programs. All of the work that Judge Miller currently does with juveniles in the city of Jefferson would not be done by the Circuit Court. Those things are reserved as services when juvenile delinquencies and juvenile chip actions are filed with the court, not on ordinance-level citations. We don't collect restitution on behalf of victims. The court would be willing to enter a third-party civil judgment, but we will not collect it on their behalf. It would be the same as someone coming in and suing them in small claims, they walk out with a judgment, but they have to collect. It's not our role. We have very established policies and procedures in the Circuit Court. The city of Johnson's Creek did not acclimate to our system well. We are an e-filing system. Nothing comes directly from a law enforcement agency. Everything filed has to come through electronically from their attorney. That was a big deal to them. Some of the other differences would be a ninety-eight dollar citation in the city of Jefferson issued by a city of Jefferson law enforcement officer. If it's filed with the Circuit Court, it becomes a hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty cents. That has no impact on the council. That has all impact on the citizens that are being cited. That's a difference in statutory court costs assigned to the Circuit Court versus the municipal My understanding is that warrants are used by Lake Country Municipal Court as a collection tool. Those are not things that we use in the Circuit Court. If you take a ninety-eight dollar citation issued by a municipality for a speeding ticket, and they receive a two-day sentence for failure to pay, and they serve two days, the city gets nothing except a bill from the law enforcement officer, or law enforcement agency for fifty dollars a day. So you lost all of your citation revenue, and you owe them a hundred bucks. Beyond that, just the pure financial loss. The Attorney General of the State of Wisconsin put out an opinion years ago saying it's not appropriate to use that as a failure-to-pay alternate sentence. Those sentences are supposed to be a sanction for failure to comply with the order of the court. You're going to lose revenue using a warrant system. My understanding from talking with the Director of State Courts Office is that, yes, city of Jefferson residents would be allowed to vote in the 2020 election. However, a resident of the city of Jefferson would not be eligible to run for the city of Jefferson municipal, run for the Lake Country Municipal Court until the year 2024. You would be, by entering into that contract, contracting away or waiving your citizens' right to run for election in that position until the year 2024. I have had no conversations with the chief or anyone else about moving to Lake Country. I was not asked about moving citations to the Circuit Court, but I will say that I struggle with the concept that a thorough investigation was done with a full understanding of the separation of branches of government when the only indications in his report are that he spoke to three other police chiefs. If you want to know what's being done and the services provided by the Circuit Court, you don't ask the police chief. You talk to the judge, you talk to the prosecutor, you talk to the clerk. Those are the people that you need to work with. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to address the council?
Hi. Joanne Miller, 1157 Hillebrand Drive. I'm the current municipal judge. And I know that I have spoken before you numerous times over the last forty-nine days since I discovered, or since I was first informed of this. I think that's an issue that's come forth quite frequently over the last forty-nine days. The many city council members didn't know this was happening. I didn't know this was happening. And I quote the chief, from the chief judge's office, when he spoke with the judge in Lake Country Municipal Court, that he was taken by surprise last week when he was informed by the clerk that this was taking place. We've talked about money. We've talked about dollars. The cost to the city again to have a municipal court, and by that I mean the cost that is not covered by the court costs represents point-two percent of this city's budget. I've talked about the impact that it has with our juveniles, that, yes, Lake Country can offer services, they can suggest, or they can recommend or order them into a program. They have twenty, we would be one of twenty jurisdictions. Our juveniles will become just a number to them. They won't know whether that, they won't, that judge will not know whether that juvenile has been in front of him one time, or whether he's been in front of him ten times in the last year. He's not going to recognize that juvenile. The idea of allowing juveniles to just simply not come and just pay your fine, I think is at a great loss. It takes away that face-to-face contact with a judge. It takes away a level of accountability, and it teaches our children that you write a check and it makes everything go away. And that's not a message we should be sending to our children. I've talked quite a bit about the inconvenience to the citizens of Jefferson for going to, oh, Lake Country Community, Lake Country Municipal Court, and I labeled it incorrectly. I should have been saying all along, I should have been talking more about removing that due process right, because by making it more and more inconvenient, by making it a burden on many citizens of this city. I was asked earlier the percentage of citizens versus non-citizens, and I, quite honestly, I didn't have that number in front of me. But I can tell you that I see over and over and over people that live in this city, in this community, that are citizens of Jefferson, who are grateful that they're given time to pay their citations, that are grateful that they didn't have to take off work to come to court, because they can't do it otherwise. And for us to sit here and somehow think that that doesn't matter is turning a blind eye to who our citizens really are in this community. The city went through a one-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar rebranding recently to change our city to, we're going outside. And it was done in an effort to bring more people into the city, to come to visit, to spend money, to play, to move here, to open businesses here. And I'm certain that many of the members here from the city council will be at the town hall meeting next week to talk about the osteopathic college and the desire to have that located in the city and have part of that connected to the city. But I ask you to think about, if you were opening a business, if you were thinking of moving into a community, would you want to commute, would you want to move into a community? Would you want to become a part of a community or open a business in a community that is whittling away its services and sending them to outside communities? And not just the community next door, the community a county away? Is that, would you want to become a part of that community? Would you want to open a business there? Would you want your employees living in that community? This is more than money. The cost savings to the city is minimal. This is about a city and where it's going. So before you vote, I'm asking you to take a minute. I'm asking you to think hard. Is your job to provide the best services possible for your, for the citizens who elected you to this job? Or is it that the citizens, their convenience can be sold to make a buck? Do you want to send a message to the citizens, potential businesses, and even the osteopathic college, that we're going outside, as Tom and Ogle said, actually means we're going outside of Jefferson? I urge you to do what you're elected to do. I urge you to serve the citizens, to listen to the citizens, the ones who are here tonight, the ones who I know have called you personally, the ones who showed up at the forum, the people who are speaking out, the people who have sent you letters. I ask you to do what's in the public's best interest. I ask you to keep the court local. And I urge you to vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge Miller. Anyone else? Anyone else wish to offer any comments?
Hi. My name's Noel Wilheim, 135 North German Avenue. Debated not coming here tonight because it's my birthday, but I came to see all you. I'm just here because I work in a research department at EWI Water. Before I came here, I did internet searches. Income and lack of income is highly correlated with crime. It's going to be the people who are committing crimes are the ones who do not have the resources that everybody else has. And then I think us as a city, asking them to come up with extra resources to go to another jurisdiction, to be heard, or maybe even to make a change in their life for the better, I don't think that's money well spent. I don't think that's being a good citizen. I don't think that's being a good neighbor. I really have a problem with asking students to miss school to go somewhere. I have a problem just in general that we have not looked at Jefferson County, which is right across the street, as another alternative. So if I could ask for one thing on my birthday, vote no. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am.
First of all, thank you for calling me, sir.
With all due respect.
Many a time, Dr. Brandl did not necessarily refer to me that way. My name is Richard Lovett, 600A Windsor Terrace in Jefferson. And first of all, I want to just thank each and every one of you for the service that you provide. Myself, serving on the school board, I understand that there are times when weighty issues come before you, and sometimes you squirm and wrestle trying to figure out what the best answer is, not for you, but for the community as a whole. And it seems like oftentimes it's six of one and half dozen of the other. But when it comes down to it, at council meetings, it's your responsibility to, in some manner, make a final decision. It is our responsibility as citizens simply to share our thoughts. To this point, I've heard numerous people speak, asking you to not make the change, or to, at the very minimum, put on hold making any change. So I'm not sure if the citizenry wants this. I'm not sure exactly who wants this, but that's something that's unclear to me. I do know that in whatever you decide, there needs to be equity. I've heard statements in the community like, well, you know, if they broke a law, they ought to go, even if it means they have to take time off of work, even if they have to miss school. That's not equity. That's double punishment. People that take time off from work to go to court at times, depending on what the job is, might lose their job. I don't believe that that's what Jefferson represents in a mindset. Students that miss time because they would have to go over to Oconomak and wait their turn in line during the school day to have their case heard, only to miss an algebra class, an English class, or whatever other class there might be. I don't know if that's justice, and I think that that's an inconvenience that ought not to be placed on them on top of the consequence of a misbehavior or some type of error in I've heard that going over to Lake Country would be roughly a ten o'clock on a Friday morning once a month. We've got a better schedule than that already here in Jefferson. For most people, at least for all of our students, but definitely for most first-shift people, the schedules that we've got here for court, for municipal court, is better. We're being of a better service to people with what we've got than what's being considered. I don't know all the discussions that happen behind closed doors. I don't know all the, this could benefit this, or this could benefit this, or this could take care of a... could take care of a," so to speak, issue that we're wrestling with. I don't know those conversations. I only know the end result. And speaking as a former high school principal, speaking as a school board member, speaking as a person that's been at the hearings that have been public, I urge you to not pass this resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to offer any comments? Anyone else? Anyone else like to offer any comments? Hearing, seeing done. Move on to number three. Appointments by the mayor and confirmed by the city council. I'm submitting the name of Roger Ganser to serve on the utility commission. We had a number of interested applicants, and they would all do a fine job. Roger's position is not only a resident of the community, as you must be to serve on the utility commission, but his employment with the school district is, I think, a good bridge between the city and the school district, and we have many good allies there. And I think Roger would bring a good perspective of how we could most efficiently use our utilities and provide services for city. So I would submit that and ask for a motion.
I move to confirm Mr. Ganser as a member of the utility commission.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Miller. Any discussion? Hearing done. All in favor, please signify by saying aye as Sarah calls her name.
Peachey?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Brandl?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Crowe?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Boyer?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Next, the move to proposed ordinance number seven dash eighteen, in ordinance to repeal and recreate Chapter 33 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Jefferson entitled Court Municipal. Alderman, Brandl, please.
Honorable Mayor Opperman, fellow council members, citizens of Jefferson, and our out-of-city visitors tonight. We don't, we rarely get a large crowd here. City of Jefferson Propose Ordinance Seven Dash Eighteen, in ordinance to repeal and recreate Chapter 33 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Jefferson entitled Court Municipal. The common counsel of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, do ordain as follows. Section One, Chapter 33 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Jefferson entitled Court Municipal, is hereby repealed and recreated as follows. Chapter 33, Municipal Court. Thirty-three dash one, Municipal Court created. There is hereby created and established a municipal court under the provision of Chapter 755 of the Wisconsin State Statutes for the City of Oconomowoc, Village of Oconomowoc, Lake, Village of Dullesman, Town of Delawarefield, Village of Neshota, Town of Lisbon, Town of Merton, Village of Sussex, Village of Hartland, Village of Lake Labelle, Town of Oconomowoc, Village of Summit, Village of Sheneak, Town of Aran, Village of Sullivan, Town of Exonia, Village of Johnson Creek, Town of Ottawa, Town of Sullivan, and City of Jefferson, or so many of those municipalities which enact an ordinance identical to this ordinance pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 755.01 parents four. Thirty-three two, Municipal Judge. Such court shall be under the jurisdiction of and presided over by a municipal judge who shall be an attorney licensed to practice law in Wisconsin and who shall reside in one of the following municipalities as I previously listed. Because of the length of this particular ordinance, and rather than read the whole thing and go over all those little towns again, a complete copy is available for public inspection in the office of city clerk. And I will move this item forward for the purpose of discussion.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Horn. Any discussion?
First, I'd like to, just a general statement, although it sounds this way to me, there is no villain in this story. This is something that we have to now and then to see if there's alternatives. So there really is no villain, and there's no reason to lose civility to one another because of this issue. Chief Pledgie is kind of being made out to be the bad guy in all this, and truly, it was not his idea. He did not want to do this. He was instructed by the city, by people in the city, to look into alternatives if and in case we would have to disband the municipal court. He didn't want to do it, but as he was asked to do it, he did it. So just so everybody understands that, he didn't just come out of the blue and decide to spend hours and hours and hours and hours of time trying to figure this thing out. That he's not the villain in this. There is no villain. I also think that the fact that neither Chief Pledgie nor the city administrator, both of them said tonight that they make no recommendation, they were simply here to present information. So as I say, there's really, there's no villain to this story. And I appreciate everybody's comments. We've heard a lot of them, and I think some are very well stated, so I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, President Brandl. Anyone else?
Well, as I said, my concern was that there was no agreement for us to look at or even consider. After our committee meeting, the mayor handed out a copy of an agreement that another municipality had signed with Lake Country. And I did ask the mayor how long they had had it, and it had been a while. The council did not have a chance to look at it, and our city attorney did not have a chance to look at this copy of an agreement until tonight. So again, I still do have a problem with not having to look over this rather lengthy agreement. There's a lot of clauses as far as organization, general, court administration committees. There's a lot of stipulations that, too, joining this, that, and the research that the chief did, which is very thorough, didn't cover because obviously all of this wasn't part of that. And, you know, the chief concentrated on, you know, what citations and the monetary costs and how that was going to be processed, and that, which is what he's familiar with, and not, you know, that we have to, you know, just looking at that we have committees that have to be formed, we have to have our ordinance have to be identical to their ordinances. There's a lot of stipulations in this agreement that I would feel more comfortable if our city attorney had more time to look at.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Honorable Mayor. First of all, I'd like to put the citizens at ease. We're not going to outsource our police department or our rec. department as recommended by individuals as a money-saving option in keeping the court open. I've also heard that we are doing this, the council is doing this, as a way or a means to raise our revenue, to earn more money, to collect more revenue from tickets. I don't see that in the violations or citations. If that was the case, then I think our police force would be handing out more tickets. So obviously, that is not the indication of why we're going this way. Missing time, inconvenience, I'm sorry, it is an inconvenience. It's a breaking of the law. It's not double jeopardy. If you look at the citations over the last five years that were given to us, over 90% are moving violation vehicle violations. I think that's an inconvenience to the citizens that they're speeding, they're doing the wrong thing. We're talking about 500 people in the City of Jefferson, that's 6% of our population, that we're going to bend over backwards and not inconvenience them. I don't know. If you were to get a ticket from a state police officer, you go to the jurisdiction of that state police officer. So there's an inconvenience, the same. Restitution, I've also heard that it's unfair for our business owners, our people that have to show up in court for restitution. And we just heard this evening during the council hall, there was zero restitution or need of that. If you look at the, again, the citations by offense, 90% of them are vehicle tickets. So I don't see where that is such a big demand or concern. Officers in court was addressed. It would not change. Currently, the officers, as I understood, are off-duty officers that do go to court when they are off-duty. So it's not as if they were going to be here and missing their shift or anything like I think the biggest question and the biggest concern that I heard from everybody is, "Why are we doing this? Why are we doing this? Why are we doing this?" I can tell you why we're doing this, and I'm going to act on the recommendation of why we're doing this. Our judge had recommended to disband the court. It's in her letter that she recommends to disband the court. We did not bring this up. So if I have to vote, I would look to the most, the person that has the most experience, the most understanding. And when she says, "Disband, abolish the court," I think that's the way we went. So I see chuckles and smiles back there. It was read in the resignation letter that that was her, at her resignation, her recommendation was to disband the court. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I would just like to say, this has been a service the city has had for many years, and I believe it's a service that needs to continue. We should be adding services, not getting rid of them.
Thank you, Rod. Anyone else?
I guess I also want, excuse me, I also want to add, there's been a lot of comment about money coming in. I believe the clerk of courts from the county gave a presentation about, on a simple speeding ticket, what we actually end up losing, could end up losing rather than bringing in by going to Lake Country rather than keeping it here. So as Jim said, the majority of the tickets are speeding tickets, so we essentially could end up losing the money that the court brings in than paying, than getting money back from our tickets that are assessed, and we might end up paying for that 19%. So we'd have to look, actually, we'd want to really look at that. So I don't think that the hard numbers have been looked at, and maybe we need to actually look at it a little bit more. And as Alderman Peachey said, the first I heard about it was when I read about it in the paper in October. And I think, you know, the council needed to know about this a little ahead of time. You know, if these things were being even looked on, looked into earlier, you know, to be, to read about it in the paper, it was the first that we, as a council, even knew about it. It's, you know, I guess, I feel kind of strange that we didn't even have a clue that all of this work was being done by the chief, and we couldn't even do any research or any input or any, you know, anything. And it's just kind of like dumped on us as a surprise. I opened up the Daily Union, and there's the article. Not how I like to find my counsel, you know, my information for my counsel packet in the Daily Union.
Anyone else?
Well, I guess since the beginning of this, since we found out about it, I've always been 50/50 or on the fence with the whole situation, but knew I had to make a decision either way. And I do see the cost efficiencies of moving it, and I did weigh the positives and negatives. But I did decide, if there is a vote tonight, I will vote no. The thing that did tip the scales for me was the contact with the juveniles and for our chance locally to point them in the right direction. So that's the only thing that tipped me over the scales. So that's how I will be voting if any action is taken.
Thank you.
I'd like to say, again, all the information presented over the last two months or so has been very helpful. Thank you, both the chief, Judge Miller, everybody on city staff, our city attorney as well, helping us gather the information to make the most informed decision we can. While we've heard varying and conflicting reports here, it's our job to weigh the pluses and minuses and try to weed out the truth and figure out how we should vote. I don't know if it's fair that I interact with the audience at this point, but I'd like to know if there could be a show of hands, how many people live and vote in the City of Jefferson right now? Less than 50% of the crowd, it would appear? Perhaps 50% of the crowd. All right. Which raises the question to me, why would 50% of the crowd be here in support of, or whether it's in favor or not, for something that will have no effect on them? Just another question that has arisen. That being said, I do understand the concerns involved here. I also have heard from many more people than the people that sit here tonight. Not everybody can be inconvenienced by a Tuesday night meeting, nor than they can on a Friday morning court date. It happens. We all have busy lives. I choose to come in on Tuesday nights and serve on this council, and I'm thankful for that opportunity. Now, is it an inconvenience? Sure. I'd like to be home with my wife and kids right now, much as I wouldn't like my wife to have to take off her job at the school to take one of my children to juvenile court. If that is required, then I understand why it would have to happen. This is a difficult vote, and I really think, given the information presented, I would have the favor probably joining the Lake Country Court. Thank you all for coming. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your opinions, but that's all I've got for now.
Any other council members? Like to offer any comments?
How many have a show of hands if you do not live but have a business in Jefferson?
Anything else? Mr. Ben?
Just want to find out, just from my point of view, as there was no recommendation from either the chief nor the city administrator, there was a, however, a recommendation from the city attorney, who was paid to give us those recommendations. And City Attorney Rogers gave his opinion that he was opposed to making the change in the court, and I think that should carry some weight with it, too. I also agree about the juvenile thing. That bothers me a lot. I think the juveniles need to be taken care of locally, and they should be appearing before a judge. They should not be having their parents write a check out and mailing it in. So I think it's a tough one, but it's where we get the big bucks. So I guess I, I think that kind of swayed me from, I was sort of in the same thing as Toby was. I was kind of six one, half dozen the other, kind of looking at this thing, and I hadn't really given thought to the juvenile. really given thought to the, to the juvenile problem. I think that's a pretty important problem. And also, the recommendation from our city attorney that, uh, we should really not do this. I think that's what we pay him for, so, uh, I think that's pretty important, too.
Thank you, Mr. Brandl. Anyone else? Hearing no one, we'll call the question. All in favor of proposed ordinance number seven dash eighteen? I'm, I'm gonna just, um, before we take the, the roll call vote here, uh, if this proposed ordinance seven dash eighteen is defeated, resolution number seventy-six and seventy-seven will be dropped from the agenda. Just wanted, just want you to understand that.
To get us out of here quicker?
So, we'll call the question. All in favor of approval of proposed ordinance number seven dash eighteen, please signify by saying aye, as Sarah calls your name, know if you're opposed.
Alderman Kraus.
Aye.
Horn.
Aye.
Fire.
No.
Peachie.
No.
Miller.
No.
Brandl.
No.
Lars.
No.
Alderman Tully.
No.
Ordinance seven eight, eighteen is defeated six to two. At this time, we'll adjourn to a public hearing to discuss the two thousand eighteen general special funds, public library, refuse recycling, capital project and equipment, storm sewer utility, wastewater utility budgets, and adoption of the two thousand nineteen general special funds, public li- excuse me, folks, we have other business to do, we were respectful of you, please show the same amount of respect. Again, we will adjourn to a public hearing to discuss the two thousand eighteen general special funds, public library, refuse recycling, capital project and equipment, storm sewer utility, wastewater utility budgets, and adoption of the two thousand nineteen general special funds, public library, refuse recycling, capital project and equipment, storm and wastewater utility budgets.
I would move.
There's nothing to move.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. You wanna find, you wanna break? Okay. We're gonna adjourn for five minutes, reconvene at, we'll make it six minutes, eight o'clock. Tim, do you have the notice of public?
I do. You wanna read it?
No.
I'll read it.
All right. We are reconvened. At this time, we'll call to order the public hearing to discuss the two thousand eight budget, uh, city budgets, and I'll ask the city administrator to read, please read the notice of public hearing.
Notice is hereby given that the common council of the city of Jefferson will hold a public hearing on the proposed two thousand nineteen city budget on twenty November twenty eighteen at seven P.M. In the council chambers of the Jefferson City Hall at three seventeen South Main Street, Jefferson, Wisconsin. Interested persons are invited to attend the public hearing. Citizens will be given an opportunity to present written and oral comments and ask questions regarding the proposed budget. The proposed budget in detail is available for, for inspection at the city administration office from eight A.M. to five P.M. On Monday through Friday, or online at W W W Jefferson Wiss dot com.
Thank you. If you would please, uh, proceed with the explanation of the two thousand nineteen budget.
Right. Bill's got us queued up here. You heard, um, probably two-thirds of this, uh, presentation, um, a few weeks ago when I, uh, provided a summary, um, but I'll, I'll just start by saying, uh, our process really starts, uh, about the middle of summer. Uh, department managers are asked to prepare their, uh, requests, uh, for the approaching new fiscal year. I take all that. I make changes, uh, if I deem that, um, they are required. I put together a budget document, uh, that works within, uh, the financial objectives established by the, uh, finance committee, and from there, it moves to the finance committee. Uh, they conduct a budget hearing. Uh, they did that over one whole day, uh, back in October. The document that is before you tonight is a result of their work and is really the recommendation of the, uh, finance committee regarding adoption of a two thousand nineteen, um, budget for the city of Jefferson. And lastly, of course, uh, tonight's the, uh, noticed public hearing. Uh, following, uh, the public hearing, uh, the council would be free to adopt the two thousand nineteen budget and set the two thousand eighteen, uh, property tax levy. We're setting, uh, the two thousand eighteen property tax levy because, of course, we levy taxes one year in arrears in Wisconsin. So... So, uh, we always start, uh, the budget process with a review of the current, uh, annual budget, how it's performing. Generally speaking, I did this a little while ago, but, um, if, uh, uh, if, uh, December thirty-first, uh, were to happen tonight, uh, I think the city would, in its general fund, which is our primary operating fund, would end up with a small operating surplus. I tend to think of that in terms of about a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, our fund balance in two thousand eighteen, uh, December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen was about, uh, um, is estimated to be about two point one million dollars. That's about at the level that we are today. By the end of the year, I think it might be slightly lower, and that's only because we advanced some funds to the, uh, police department renovation project that, uh, likely won't be reimbursed out of the proceeds from the, uh, twenty-year bond that we issued, uh, five or six weeks ago. One of the most important, uh, things that you're gonna be interested in is the, uh, proposed property tax levy summary. This is, uh, really different. Um, I did a number of these budgets for the city. Uh, this is really the first time that I can recall that we are not asking for a levy increase for operating costs. Uh, we're asking for a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollar increase in the property tax levy. That's about two point nine percent. The entire amount of that, uh, increase, for the most part, the vast, vast majority of it, is due to, uh, new debt service on the twenty-year bonds for the police department, uh, renovation project we issued, and then there was a small increase in our existing, uh, debt service, but we are not asking to levy dollars for salaries or operating, uh, expenses. Uh, it is, uh, entirely for, uh, increasing debt service on the projects that I just mentioned. We do know enough information about the community that, um, we can determine what the, uh, property tax rate is. Uh, the components that go into, uh, allowing us to calculate a property tax rate are on this slide. Uh, there's a nice, uh, six or seven-year history, so you can follow the trends. Um, our equalized value, you can see where, uh, things stood in two thousand twelve and where they are in two thousand eighteen. We added about thirteen million dollars, um, in equalized value, uh, for the last year, and this is always measured as of January one, so that five thirty-five, uh, number, five hundred thirty-five million dollar number, uh, goes back until January one of two thousand eighteen. Uh, we had a little more value in our tax increment districts, added, um, about two point six million dollars or so. Um, we know what the city's assessment ratio is, it's, uh, ninety-seven point nine four percent, little lower than, uh, it was the previous year. Uh, and we know what the amount of, uh, tax base that we're gonna spread our levy over to, uh, get our rate. When you make the calculations, uh, the proposed property tax rate is eight dollars and ninety-two cents per one thousand evaluation. Uh, that is about a ten cent decrease from, uh, the previous year. On the next page, um, we do know some of the, uh, other levy information, uh, and tax rate information from, uh, our other overlapping taxing jurisdictions. What we don't know yet are the state aids, so we can calculate a gross property tax, uh, rate for all of the jurisdictions, the county, the school district, the city, and the vocational district, but we really can't calculate that, uh, total, uh, net, uh, I'm sorry, uh, net, uh, tax rate because we don't know the value of state aids that get applied to, uh, offset it. So, generally, what I can say is, knowing the levies from, um, all the taxing jurisdictions, um, we think there is, uh, about a twenty-four cent per thousand increase in the, uh, overall tax levies from the four jurisdictions. Uh, the, uh, largest increase is with the school district, um, the other tax rates for, uh, the three jurisdictions are decreasing, uh, a little bit. Um, but, uh, overall, when you, uh, take a look at all of the jurisdictions, it's about a twenty-four cent per thousand, uh, dollar increase. On the next page, um, if you look at, uh, the city's total spending that's proposed for two thousand nineteen, it's about a one point eight million dollar increase, and this is across all our funds, and in a minute, I'll show you what, uh, our system of fund accounting looks like, and really, the reason for a fairly large increase is the city's undertaking a lot of one-time capital improvement projects this year that, uh, will spend, uh, a little bit of brief time, uh, by the time we get to, uh, the end of this presentation. So, the city uses a system of fund accounting to account for its operations. Those are all the different funds that we utilize. Uh, the primary fund is our general fund that finances or funds the vast majority of the city's ongoing programs, uh, services and operations. Uh, but we have a number of tax increment district funds, we have stormwater fund, wastewater fund, debt service fund, uh, as well as, uh, some others. Uh, if you add up all the spending across all that funds, it's up about one point eight million dollars, but the secret for that increase really lies within the capital improvement fund, um, funding, uh, one-time capital improvement projects. These are the assumptions that, uh, are factored into, uh, this budget. Uh, it really is designed to preserve our current service levels, take them forward into two thousand nineteen, and I think, for the most part, this budget, um, does achieve that. There are some, uh, very few, but there are some position, uh, changes. Uh, the first is, this budget funds one new full-time paramedic position, and it funds a number of paid-in-station, part-time paramedic positions. Um, one thing we can talk a little bit, uh, Chief Wagner and EMS Director Reinan are here. Uh, we would tell you that the city no longer can guarantee or provide service, uh, running a rig out of EMS by providing, uh, that service through paid-on-call staff. There just are not an, enough of them left. There are a few. What is proposed here is to pay a person to be in that station and to respond out of the station, and that's how we would intend to fund one rig, twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five, with a staff of two. Don't confuse that with the paramedic intercept operation, that's another bucket, but to one, to get one rig out the door on a twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five basis, we generally are paying people, there's a little augmentation of paid-on-call people, but basically, we are paying, uh, people to be at that station and to respond out of the station. We just cannot guarantee service on a paid-on-call basis, just aren't enough of, uh, the older service members. Fair to say that? Did I say that? Anything I forgot I should add?
Nope.
It's the fact of where we are. And that, yep, I'm sorry, go ahead, Peggy.
Kinda read my mind, but, so, we're gonna have somebody that's gonna be able to do the, the little re- the paramedic, the...
That's a separate bucket.
Right, but we'll have, and then, pretty much everybody's gonna be a paramedic now, right? Essentially, that's the goal.
That is our goal.
So, this one, we're adding one to, to run an ambulance. Okay.
Yep. So, I, okay, I, I'm a little confused, and I wanna make sure I understand this. So, it says here, "One new full-time paramedic position with several paid-in-station, part-time paramedic positions."
Yes.
I thought we were, it's E M T, paid-in-station. Uh, this isn't what I understood at finance. Or am I looking at something else?
Be a combination of, whoever we can bring in to work. I think that's the reality. I don't know that we would find enough part-time paramedics to do that. There will be, I'm sure, a number of E M Ts.
I think, Paul, that to really answer your question, the full-time addition to staff is gonna be a paramedic licensed person.
Right, right.
The other positions will be a co-mingle of, of A-level and paramedic, um, positions. As we continue to transition to the paramedic level with the flex staffing, as we talked about, the pilot program that we're involved in, so, we're continuing to move that direction. So, to answer your question, you will have a co-mingle of As and Bs and Bs in that mix. Okay, and then, um, currently, we have two full-time paramec and the rest are on-call, right? Or they're all full-time, but they only... You have three full-time... Paramedics right now? You have three full-time staff members, two are paramedic that run in seven ninety-nine. Right. Mike is now a licensed paramedic as well, but he is working on the ambulance bucket side of things. Um, and then we have two additional licensed paramedics currently, Bryce and Alexa, um, that are also able to run on that side, uh, on the ambulance side of things, not the seven ninety-nine side of things. So, and then, from there, we have our A-levels, and then we'll be looking to add additional staff as well. Okay.
Did answer your question, Paul?
I think so.
I think a short answer is, you know, this, this is the start, but we're not done. We just need to figure out how to pay for it, 'cause this stuff is pretty expensive, and I'll tell you, uh, a little more about that in a minute. Um, the other, uh, personnel change is that the municipal court clerk position is proposed to reduce from thirty hours to twenty hours per week. Uh, the savings factored into this budget is approximately ten thousand dollars in salary and, uh, benefits. Uh, in terms of employee compensation, um, uh, for the most part, there are some subtle differences, but for the most part, this funds, uh, a three percent wage adjustment pretty much across the board. I will say that we have a unresolved collective bargaining agreement. Uh, we'll be meeting for the first time with our W P P A bargaining unit in early December, uh, but I wouldn't think that a wage settlement would be beyond that three percent. Um, just as a, a quick comment, um, uh, due to levy limits, we really, we've fallen behind, you know? We've had lots of one percent, uh, wage increases the past few years. Some of you folks in the private sector may, uh, have experienced that as well. Uh, we're really able to make it three percent. I don't know if that's sustainable with levy limits, simply because we're making a big health insurance change, saving a lot of money. Uh, without that, our budget would look different, certainly, we wouldn't have a three percent wage adjustment. You know, we'd be talking about probably having to make some cuts, um, in certain places in the budget. So, in terms of health insurance, uh, this does fund the new Dean healthcare plan, it pairs that plan with a health savings account program, 'cause it's a higher deductible plan, and it funds all of the deductible the first year, two thousand nineteen, for our employees. And the next page is kind of a classification of our authorized city positions. It would look a lot like the current one, with the exceptions of what I just mentioned in terms of, uh, the municipal court clerk, and then the one, uh, full-time paramedic position that we're, uh, we're asking, uh, to hire. Um, we are carrying, uh, an approximately sixty-four thousand dollar miscellaneous line item. I will tell you, that does include funding for what we believe would be the two thousand twenty-year health insurance increase. Remember, with the Dean program, we know what the maximum increase... Remember, with the Dean program, we know what the maximum increases will be for the next four-year period. So we are basically pre-funding that with savings from the health insurance change that we're making. I think when I talked a few weeks ago, I said, "That's money that is built into the budget. There's not an intended use in 2019." And about $34,000, $35,000 of it's probably ripe to be used for a one-time capital improvement project. So it's not funding operations. It's in there, we'll need it in 2020. If the council wants to spend it on a one-time capital project, that'd be the best way to do it, I would say. In terms of expenditure restraint, we estimate the city's threshold to be about 2.6, a little higher than it typically is. And as you know, because the city's participated in that expenditure restraint program for a long, long time, if you keep your expenditures below a threshold each year, you're eligible for additional shared revenue. We get about $130,000 extra dollars a year on our shared revenue payment. But once you lose it, you know, you go back to zero. So you don't want to do that. So what we've done is, we never spend, usually, we do not spend up to our expenditure threshold. We reserve capacity in future years. This is a really good thing. I'm sure not every community has this, but, you know, we're reserved at about $220,000. So if the city has to make some big operating expenditure or expenditures in a given year, and it would exceed its threshold, it's got a safety net built in at about $220,000. And you've been working on that for quite a long time. General obligation debt, there is one proposed borrowing. That is approximately a half a million dollars, and that would fund the street extension project that would be required to provide access to the joint city-county park we're hoping to construct, starting in 2019, upriver at the site of the old County Highway Shop property. I think I might have mentioned that the city submitted, received funding over a half a million dollars, the biggest one in the form of a stewardship grant that was approved by the stewardship committee, but because of the size of the award, it's subject to joint finance committee review, and they can put a hold on it and request a hearing. That hasn't been scheduled yet, because I would imagine with the election now behind us, there's probably some new members that will be coming aboard there. So Dale, I don't really know when that's scheduled. I was hoping that the 14-day review period would have started, but I'm told just today that it has not, and they're going to seat the new members of that committee. So I'm not sure what that means, but generally speaking, we'd like to think that we'd be able to start that project late spring, early summer, and have a lot of the park potentially installed by the end of the year, and probably some of it gets finished up in 2020. But that's boat launch, trails, parking lot, kayak launches, a restroom, what am I missing, Dale? And trails, lots of green space along the river frontage of the old County Highway Shop The, our total general fund budget, that of course is the city's main operating fund. That is proposed to increase about 2.9%, or about $171,000. The biggest expenditure increase inside that number is that EMS change in how we're going to deliver service with paid-in-station. The cost of that is approximately $88,000. It's the biggest chunk of our spending increase, but it's something I think, hopefully you'll realize, that we have to do if we're going to provide service. We do levy taxes in the general fund, and we do transfer those out to other funds. The biggest net transfer is, we need about $126,000, new dollars. That's almost 100% of that levy increase I talked about, to pay for debt service on those new bonds and existing debt service schedule as well. The other assumptions that are built into this, in terms of public charges for services, user fees, there are no major utility rate increases, water, power, stormwater, no new increases for sanitary sewer, although these numbers reflect the last tiered rate increase that was approved. Remember, we went to fixed charges for residential properties earlier this year, so it includes a full 12 months of that. The rate for our refuse and recycling collection service will remain unchanged in 2019, and there really aren't any other significant increases in fees or public charges for services that are proposed. In terms of our capital improvement project equipment replacing spending, we're proposing to spend a fair amount of money, about $2.4 million. There's a number of sources, including our capital improvement project equipment replacement fund, our sanitary sewer fund will have a piece of the improvement cost, stormwater utility fund, TID number five, and then our park development fund. The major projects, and I'll just tell you a little bit about a couple of these, because I think you've probably seen these next two pages a number of times, but we're anticipating spending what we think, Bill, will be about $1 million to expand the North Industrial Park. We'll be talking to you about starting the engineering on that soon, assuming our budget is put in place tonight. And that is simply because we have no more industrial manufacturing lots in the North Industrial Park. We will be expanding into the property that at one time was going to be the home of the medical college, but we certainly hope that moves down to the southwest side of the community, which would allow the city then on land that it already owns, about 100 acres, to expand that park. There's funding in the form of a new borrowing for that Rock River Landing Street Extension project that would provide access to the park upriver. We believe, and we'll be talking about this project shortly, we hope that we are able to expand the Riverwalk on the Rotary Park side of the river up to the foremost property and through it, with a goal of getting up to that joint city-county park, because that will have a trail system, but that's the long-range goal, to try to do that. But there is funding to extend the Riverwalk up to and through what is the foremost buildings' property right now. There's money in the budget to extend water to the west side, or the east side of State Highway 26, up near the North Interchange Project. That would be needed to fund development on the cell tower site. That's the property that we've talked about for a gas station, and then I will talk a little bit tonight about another project up there. And then there's typical money for the sidewalk repair program. Bill, we have dollars for street resurfacing. That's about $260,000 to do the local street resurfacing program. I don't know, do you want to mention anything? I know Greenwood's kind of the big project this year, and I don't know what else you're looking at, maybe haven't decided yet, Bill.
Yeah, East Greenwood's going to be the primary focus, but as we've been doing the last couple of years, we're going to design it and bid it in a manner that hopefully gives us flexibility to add some additional streets. At this point, I wouldn't name those streets. We will determine that when I have further cost estimates during the design, but we're anticipating that if all goes well, numbers stay where they've been consistent the last couple of years, that we're able to resurface a couple additional blocks beyond Greenwood as well.
So the next page is the schedule for equipment replacement. Not going to spend any time on it. You have things like police vehicles, computers. There's a couple of one-ton truck replacements for public works and parks and miscellaneous other equipment, but that's all funded from our capital improvement project equipment replacement fund. If you just cycle forward, Bill, here's how I'll end this. I kind of do this every year. You know, if you don't know a lot about municipal government, and you had 10 minutes to look at information, there's always kind of three pieces of it that I suggest, look at it, and it gives you kind of a quick snapshot as to the fiscal health of the community or of a community. And the first is the city's statutory debt limit. So most of you know that you don't get to issue unlimited amounts of general obligation debt. You're limited to a number not exceeding 5% of your equalized value. That's quite a bit for the city, $20 million-plus of debt you could carry. You're carrying about $6.7 million, including $1,007,000 that we just borrowed to do the Police Department renovation project. So you're at about 1.3% of your total 5% debt capacity. I suspect you will find that happy, handy, because as we've talked, there's not one inch of concrete, asphalt, water, sewer, power mains on any of the property proposed for the medical college. You will need that capacity, I would think, to improve enough of that site to get the college started with construction. The other good story is that the city tends to issue its debt and schedule it pretty aggressively. Most of the debt, there is an exception with the bonds we just issued for the Police Department, those are 20-year bonds. Most of our debt is issued on a 10-year or less basis, so it pays off quite quickly. Just in general, you know, the city's debt capacity reserve is really, really positive. The pie chart kind of shows you the statutory limit versus our actual debt, so you've got really a lot, a lot of capacity remaining. The next series of slides is a historical snapshot. I think there's a little over 10 years of what's happened with the city's fund balance. I think probably the most meaningful one is the minimal line graph there. That is representative of the city's undesignated fund balance. You can see where you were in 2006, about $750,000. I'd be here to tell you, that's about when I came to work for the city. We had a hard time cash flowing the organization, because, you know, you collect property taxes twice a year, or you get your big shared revenue payments basically once a year. You get a small second payment. And if you don't have cash in between to your bills, that's problematic. And you can just see, I think the Finance Committee and the City Council have really worked hard to increase that over time, and, you know, now you're a little over $2.1 million. The next one is the historical equalized value trend. You know, you can see what happened during the most harsh or worst years of the downturn, and what happened in this community with property values. It just bottomed out in 2013, 2014. We added 13, a little better than 13 million this year, so we are, as of January 1, 2018, we are back above our equalized value for the community in 2009, when things started to slide downhill because of the recession. It's taken us a while to come back. My guess is, I don't know, Toby, you'd be better than I, because you see the trends, but I think most are saying, you know, we're going to start seeing some slowdown.
It has already, yeah.
So, but we are the last to show improvement, and we're the last to show the effect, because we're, you know, we're basically a year behind with how we value properties. So we may get another good year or two of some growth. The last slide that I'm going to just talk about is just a quick summary. So we're hoping to carry forward our 2018 service levels into 2019. The proposed tax levy is 2.9%. No significant increases in user fees or public charges for services. We're maintaining implementation of the city's capital improvement plan. We have a five-year plan. We're funding the 2019 component of that five-year plan next year. I generally say, I think the city's got a pretty positive financial trend. And the last thing I'm going to say is that, we talked about this at the Finance Committee level a few weeks ago. We recently had a bond rating. Moody's assigned double A3 bond rating for us. I can tell you, I'm no expert. I don't have a license to trade securities, but in my time, I've done enough of these where you appear before the analysts and, you know, spend time with them, and you hope they give you a bond rating, because the better that rating, the cheaper you're going to issue debt. So that is really a good accomplishment for this community to have the ability to issue double A debt. I can tell you, generally speaking, the city looks more like a single A bond-rated community. They maintained our double A rating really for two reasons. Number one, you have pretty significant fund balance, and you have a track record of not spending that fund balance down, but maintaining it. These guys really like stability. And then you have relatively low debt burden. You have lots of capacity, and that's been the trend for a long time. But if you look at things like the size of the community, tax base, income levels, things like that, that they rate you on, we're more like an A. But that fund balance and that debt capacity really carried the day and really got us into that double A level. And that's good, because, you know, when you issue debt over time, 20 years, like we just did, you're really talking about tens of thousands of dollars different in interest rate between single and double A, for the most part. So, you're glossy, I'm done.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you for the explanation. Any persons wishing to be heard, please state your name, address, and reason for appearing. This is a public hearing, and citizens are invited to speak to the budget. We ask that you do so from the podium, and state your name and address for the record. Anyone care to offer comments? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and move on to Resolution Number 78, a resolution to adopt a 2019 special funds, public library, refuse recycling, capital project and equipment, storm sewer utility, and wastewater utility budgets. Finance Committee Chair Peachey, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Upperman, fellow council members, and citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson, Resolution Number 78. Be it resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson that the 2019 general fund budget attached heretofore and the 2019 budgets for special funds, public library, recycling, refuse, capital projects, and equipment, storm sewer utility, and the wastewater treatment utility are hereby adopted, and be it further resolved that any budgetary figures stipulated in the municipal code shall be amended to reflect changes authorized in the municipal budget. I would so move.
It's been moved, is there a second? Seconded by Alderman Kraus. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of Resolution Number 78, please signify by saying aye, sir calls your name, know if you're...
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Randall?
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Byer?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you. Resolution Number 79, a resolution approving the 2018 tax rate and 2019 tax levy. Alderman Kraus, please.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, fellow council members, citizens of Jefferson.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, fellow council members, citizens of Jefferson. City of Jefferson, Resolution Number 79. Be resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson, the 2018 general fund property tax levy for municipal services in 2019, in the amount of $3,342,900. And the 2018 public library fund levy for 2019 service, in the amount of $435,125. And the 2018 capital project and equipment fund levy for 2019, in the amount of $695,000, is hereby approved. And be it further resolved that the following tax rate is hereby adopted. City of Jefferson, $8.92. I would so move.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Brandal. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of Resolution Number 79, please signify by saying aye, sir, calls your name, know if you're opposed.
Alderman Brandal.
Aye.
Lars?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you. Resolution Number 80, the consent agenda. Alderman Tully, please.
Thank you, Mayor. City of Jefferson, Resolution Number 80. Be it resolved by the common council of the City of Jefferson, Wisconsin, that the consent agenda for November 20, 2018 is hereby adopted. A, we had vouchers payable for September manuals in the amount of $12,500. Vouchers payable for October manuals in the amount of $66,986. And vouchers payable for November 2018 in the amount of $540,283.60. Payroll summary for November 9, 2018, in the amount of $153,643.41. B, we had council minutes from the October 16, 2018 meetings of the common council. And C, licenses as approved by the regulatory committee tonight. We had none, there were no operators or special-class Bs applied for. I would so move.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of the minutes, please signify, and the consent agenda, rather, please signify by saying aye, as Sarah calls your name.
Alderman Lars?
Aye.
Tully?
Aye.
Kraus?
Aye.
Horn?
Aye.
Fire?
Aye.
Peachey?
Aye.
I would then abstention from the minutes.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Passes seven with one abstention. At this time, we'll adjourn to closed session pursuant to Section 19.85 parent E of the Wisconsin State Statutes regarding a business prospect. We will be convening to open session, however, we will not be taking any action in open session. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session. So moved?